We'll call a regular meeting to order at this time. First item on the agenda is swearing in newly elected folks who didn't have a competitor in the election. So, he won by landslide.
She just had a great game.
Oh, wait, wait. We forgot to do the colors. I got us out of order. We forgot to do the colors, so personally. And then I'll get another chance to say that a little bit.
With the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to the R O C C. Now for the road call, just let be noted that all are in attendance other than Mr. Sampson. Maybe they're not in attendance tonight. Now, open office. And that's all I'm gonna say, so. Administrator that clock.
I will. Tori, will you repeat after me?
Yes.
I, Tori Turnbow.
I, Tori Turnbow.
Will hereby declare under oath.
Will hereby declare under oath.
That I will faithfully perform the duties.
That I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of member of the Board of Education.
Of member of the Board of Education.
Of independent school district number fifty-seven.
Of independent school district number fifty-seven.
Of Garfield County, Oklahoma.
Of Garfield County, Oklahoma.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
All the duties pertaining to said office.
All the duties pertaining to said office.
And support, obey, and defend.
And support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States and Oklahoma.
Of the United States and Oklahoma.
Congratulations and welcome aboard.
Everybody's sworn in more than they should.
But you know what this means? Because Matt's not here, you now have seniority over him. I think that's what that means. Next item on the agenda is the election of officers. Would you like to move that to now?
Yes, please.
Okay. Would you like to make comments?
Yes, I wanted to. Let this minutes be right back.
We're making a special thank you.
I'd like to tell you, you want to help her out. I think she's got some stuff to bring in.
Okay.
Well, I thought since we were installing our new officer, we should honor Willa Joe for forty years of service to the board.
Thank you. Did you get the rest of this?
And Ms. Fowler, we have a number of goodies that are coming in here for you that have been made by students across the district. And got some cards and a few other things that the campuses have brought you. I know that you will find those very special since the students made many of them.
Oh, wow. I see. To my first and favorite teacher of this. Oh, my goodness.
And Ernie brought you flowers before he knew that you would be allergic to them, so.
I had him sitting here and I moved him because I told him, I said, Willa Joe would think this of me. She'd think I'm trying to do her in. But let me present this also. This was not made by students. But this is a flag that says Enid Public Schools hereby recognizes Willa Joe Fowler for forty years of service to public education and local school children as an Enid Board of Education member presented February twenty fifteen.
I probably will say the wrong thing if I start out. I see so many of my favorite people here tonight. And I thought it was maybe because of Mr.'s effort. And it probably is. But I want to thank all of you who came tonight to our meeting for whatever reason you came. You know, we all need to share. This is an effort. It's not any one person by any means. It's a team effort and always has been. And I've been so privileged to be part of this team for so long. I'm sorry I sound like this. I've had pneumonia. I promised I thought I did. And Matt didn't show up. They didn't want to sit by me tonight. But I promise I'm, I'm, I've had so many antibiotics and everything. Can't be contagious. What an honor it's been to serve the people and the children of Enid for this time. And I, you know, I see at least one student from preschool. Well, no, there's two. But you're just start counting. And from teaching at Longfellow. And it's just been, it's really been a passion for me. And I said they probably have to carry me out of here kicking and screaming someday because as long as I have any, any life left in me and that I can fight for our kids and for education and for Enid Public Schools, Oklahoma Public Schools, it's anywhere. Because they all deserve the best education we can give them. And what an honor to be reelected by the people of Enid and to serve our wonderful, wonderful kids. I just, it means so much to me. And I believe it's a fight worth fighting. And it's not what I thought it was gonna be forty years ago. I don't think it ever is for anybody, do you? What do you think? I mean, I thought we were gonna just go right down the road and do great things. I didn't realize that there were a few stumbling blocks in the way called finance and cooperation from people that don't understand why our children deserve the best education we can give them. And, but anyway, I'm, I'm, I'm very humbled. I'm, I'm very grateful to the board I've served with and every board member that I have served with in the past because everyone has brought something to the table. And I'm so glad we still have a seven-member board because I just think that the more good brains we have and the more energy we have going for our students, then the more we're gonna get done. And I'm grateful to our administrators through the years and the wonderful, wonderful teachers. I just, you know, that's what it's all about. Having someone in the classroom that cares and knows how to teach. And if I say anymore, I'll probably start crying. I just, I just appreciate this so much. And. Well, we maybe could put the cake over and some of these people could have a piece before they leave. Would you please stay and celebrate with me? Share some memories. My goodness, over forty years, we have a lot, lot of memories to share. And I'm just thrilled to be sharing them with you all tonight.
Well, Ms. Fowler, you have touched generations of students and children in this school district. And for that, the Enid Public Schools are indebted to you. And they certainly thank you as we do. Thanks for serving.
And I'm not even gonna count that against your rant total for the minute.
Thank you. You're understanding.
We'll give you another one too.
Okay, now let you.
I'm having trouble with this agenda. First is election of board president and board vice president. So I guess with that, I will open nominations for board president.
Can we make a motion to keep our slate we have right now?
By acclamation.
By acclamation.
The motion. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fowler. Any discussion on that?
Carl, any comments?
Any other emotions at this time? All right, hearing none, we'll take the vote on by acclamation to keep Ernie as president and Carl as vice president. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, gentlemen, and thank you for your service.
May I, may I say one more?
Do I get cake?
Well, my co-parting prime over there, Jenny Webster deserves some recognition too because this is her twentieth anniversary on the board.
Oh, it is?
Really? Congratulations. Only twenty more years, you got a cake.
Well, no, she won't. She'll have to cook her own. If I could draw us back to the agenda. Next thing we need to do is discuss and then possible action to approve the bonds for district treasurer and assistant treasurer. Carl, do you want to discuss that?
Certainly. I'm pleased to report, and you should have copies in your online agenda that we have within our possession, the proper bonds for both district and assistant treasurer. And recommend that those be approved by the board.
Is there a motion?
It can be approved.
I'll take that as a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We need to now appoint these officers. And does this take a vote or is it just an appointment?
You would vote to make the appointment.
Okay. And can we vote for all of these?
You can do the entire slate.
You can see there under item four, board clerk is Carl White. Assistant clerk, Carl White. Minutes clerk, Carl White. Assistant minutes clerk, you can't be your own assistant, can you? Carol Gober and Sammy Brawley. Treasurer, Pam Buckminster. Assistant treasurer, Lynette Rice. Is there a motion to approve this group?
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Before we go on recognitions, I just want to make a quick comment that I asked her earlier today. This is not Melanie's last board meeting. She will be here for one more, but we do want to congratulate you publicly and say that we wish you the very best in Duncan. I, well, I shouldn't say the very best. We hope we got your very best. We wish them the second best, okay? Is that word?
Thank you very much.
But I hope that your career there is fruitful and that you have a, have a great time down there, so. Congratulations on that. You want to make a speech, man?
I won't make a long speech. I'll just say that I felt very privileged to work in Enid and I've learned so much here. And so I appreciate your patience and your guidance with me. But I'm looking forward to a strong relationship between both districts. So, thank you.
It's an honor to have worked with you and we wish you the very best in your first superintendency. And we'll, don't lose our phone number. We'll help you any way we can.
Thank you.
Let's give Melanie a hand for her.
That brings us to recognitions. Amber, do you want to lead us through these, please?
Yes, sir. We're gonna continue this evening by recognizing more people who've made a continuing contribution to our school district. We're gonna start with two organizations. Park Avenue Thrift, Security National Bank. These are two organizations in our community who just time and time again give to our school district, invest in our children. Quality school system means a quality community. Most recently, they partnered together, which they both also do very well, making sure that they're working with the community, finding community partners to help provide fifteen hundred dollars towards the Monroe Playground Project. And so the PTA, the administrators in Monroe, they are very excited to make improvements to their playground. And the dollars provided by these organizations will allow them to get started with that very important safety mulch that they need, need below their equipment. So I'd like to ask Paula Knight Gill and David Hume with Park Avenue Thrift and April Danahay with Security National Bank to please join me. You guys would like to share a little bit about the project or your interest in assisting with the project. And then certainly we would like to recognize you for your generosity.
Greg, come on in.
Well, I'm April Danahay with Security National Bank. And yes, we received a phone call from the teacher at Monroe who really, really needed some help getting her project started, or the school's project started. First thing I thought of was, oh, boy, here we go. And, and it was a wonderful thing for me to actually take the phone call because I thought of our good friends at Park Avenue Thrift, which our bank partners with for a lot of projects, including the, the docks and dash. And they are so giving to the community. I thought they would love to be part of helping children enjoy themselves at lunchtime and after school. So they partnered with us and we were thrilled to be able to provide that and get that project started. Thank you very much.
And thank you for calling us.
Listen, I will remember that.
Would you all like to say anything? Good.
We, we are real excited about what Enid Public Schools is doing. And you have just been on a great uphill climb for several years. And we just expect big things and we're getting them. And that's how we feel. We like to encourage the arts and we like to encourage children and their growth. Just Saturday, we had a, another art contest at Park Avenue for fourth graders. We gave away thirty-three hundred dollars to teachers that day. And that is our fourth contest of the year. We have another one coming up just for Vance Early Education. It's called Home Sweet Home, to let the people at Vance know you always have a home in Enid. So we're excited about that. And then we'll do a couple of middle school contests before the year is over. And so we've had a good, we've had a good fourteen, fifteen school year as well. And we just love what you guys are doing. Thank you.
Thanks for your help. We really appreciate it.
Vote and squeeze my coworker here.
Just gonna snap this picture for me so I can put it on Facebook.
We're gonna take pictures?
We're gonna whisper, let me share all of this.
I want to, I want to ask Kyle with April.
I'll just, Kyle first.
Would you do it? What? Do you run it already? It's a brand new phone. Okay.
All right, one, two, three. Give it one more. One, two, three. Okay.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate it.
Ready for the middle school administrators?
Yes.
Is that Melanie?
Yes.
I'm at the podium again this evening to honor principals and to showcase some of the work that they do. I'm especially proud to be talking about middle school principals this evening. And because most of the time, what they do is lead with their hair on fire. And so that's what it takes to be a really amazing middle school principal is to be, have a lot of energy, be dynamic, animated, and also be very flexible and adaptable. So, working with early adolescents is a special calling. It is different from working with high school adolescents. And I'm really excited to tell you about the middle school administrators that we have working in the district because they have a special talent. These are folks who are absolutely in the right place and they're doing the right thing for kids every single day. I am going to recognize them as teams. They're strong as individuals. I can talk about them individually. But I think they would tell you that they work as a team. They're strongest as a team. And so I'm gonna highlight them as, as partners. There's a study that's been done by the National Association of Secondary School Principals called Breaking Ranks in the Middle. And it highlights the specific work that middle school administrators do for their schools. And what it says is that a middle school needs to have strong collaborative leadership. And we have that in Enid with our middle schools through their professional learning community work and also through their work with response to intervention. It also says that middle school administrators should emphasize personalized learning for students. And we have that in all three of our middle schools as well. Each middle school emphasizes student voice and student choice. But they also personalize learning and individualized learning for specific students to meet their individualized needs. And they also focus on transition learning. And that is something else that is part of a national standard for middle schools and the work that they do. So I'm gonna start with Longfellow with Mr. Fitzgerald and Mr. Mills, if you guys will stand. What I especially want to highlight with the Longfellow administrative team is that they work not only just as strong partners together, but they've also built a strong leadership team around them. They are probably one of the best in the state at collecting data for students and understanding what it means to meet individual student needs. And they are making great progress and great strides this year. They have offer Islander and Hispanic councils at Longfellow Middle School. And they also have Ms. Wibbling, who was able to get the students accepted to present at a national conference in Philadelphia this summer. So that's Longfellow's team. I'm gonna recognize Emerson's team next, Ms. Bogoszkowski. How'd I do? Close enough to death. And Mr. Luke De Meyer. They win the award for the two principals with the longest names. So that in of itself would be just to get the kids to say their names. Emerson also has a very strong care team. And they actually set the model for the district for RTI and the way the care team works with students and working on individualized interventions for students. This year, they wrote an avid grant. And an avid grant is specifically for those students who are college-bound and first time in their family to attend college. And they should be hearing about that grant any day now. They also have a strong student council at Emerson. And they put on an amazing Veterans Day assembly. Dr. Floyd and I were there. And it was student-led, student-driven, and it was really an incredible ceremony. So that's the Emerson team. Thank you. Yeah. And then Waller's team, Mr. Beauchamp and Ms. Buck. They also have student-led assemblies and they offer a student-led assembly every Monday. Every Monday, every Monday, every Monday. So that takes a lot of work to put on. And it's actually, they have facilitated the students to help lead that. They have usually a video presentation. They have a speaker. And they just highlight student leadership at Waller. And it's one of the best I've ever seen programs to do that. They also have been awarded a ninety thousand O E T T technology grant. And we were there to see the presentation for that. And they did a fabulous job of showcasing what students are doing with technology at Waller. They have a GTO group, which is students giving back to the community. And that's something that they're very proud of there, too. They do a lot of outreach at Waller into the community. And they also do an RTI program where they rotate interventions. They're learning to be really flexible, what are the students' needs. And they're rotating those interventions based on what teachers are available. And they're flexible with their scheduling in terms of making sure that it's about student-driven instruction and not just about, you know, a teacher's schedule. So I want to have all of them stand again because you are going to be receiving a coin for Mr. Courier, who's gonna recognize you. But I want to say, and I mean this truly, when I walk out of these middle schools, when I go visit and I walk out, I walk out being so very proud because they are middle schools that would rival any middle school in this country. And I absolutely mean that. We should be very proud of the work that they do and how hard they are working to make sure that kids' needs are met. So I present them to you, Mr. Courier, as a great administrative middle school staff.
Amber, when he, after he gets done presenting the coins, why don't we get a group picture of them?
Let's give him one more hand.
Thank you all for what you do on a daily basis. We appreciate it.
We have one more?
Yes, sir. This is one of our favorite times of the year. We're approaching Read Across America Week. This is a special time when we celebrate our young learners and our young readers. And we encourage our community to read with a child and just really promote literacy and that growth in the students. There are so many fun activities like Spot the Cat, the poster contest. This is a fun and exciting time and it would not be partner, it would not be possible without the partnership between the school district and Enid Education Association. So at this time, I would like to introduce Tila Armour. And Tara Lash is also here and she's helping with activities. And they're gonna tell us a little bit about the special events that are planned for Read Across America. And we would like to ask the board to please proclaim March second through the sixth, which coincides with Dr. Seuss's birthday, as Read Across America Week.
Like she said, we will be doing Spot the Cat for three days. And we will have contests. The pre-K kindergarten and first grade will be doing decorating Dr. Seuss's hat. The winner will get a Dr. Seuss book and a hat. And the second and third place will get a book. We thought that they needed to have the books in their hands. Second and third will be decorating a bookmark. And fourth and fifth will be creating a new character for Dr. Seuss. Spot the Cat's three days. And we will also be having dress-up days to help encourage participation.
I'd just like to recognize them. I asked Tara to speak today because my voice had lured us all weekend and we had a long day, a high school day. I just wanted to thank our committee for working so hard over the last month and a half to get this ready. Tara Lash, Charlotte Good, and Jana Pink have been working very hard to make sure all the things come together so our students and our staff can really enjoy the week. It's really a lot of fun. Thank you.
Please let me read the resolution that we're adopting for Read Across America twenty fifteen. Says, whereas the citizens of Enid stand firmly committed to promoting reading as the catalyst for our students' future academic success, their preparation for America's jobs of the future, and their ability to compete in a global economy. And whereas Enid has provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement in the education of our youth grounded in the principle that educational investment is key to the community's well-being and long-term quality of life. And whereas Read Across America, a national celebration of Dr. Seuss's birthday on March second, promotes reading and adult involvement in the education of our community students, and therefore be it resolved that the Enid Board of Education calls on the citizens of Enid to assure that every child is in a safe place reading together with a caring adult on March second, twenty fifteen. to assure that every child is in a safe place reading together with a caring adult on March 2nd, 2015. And be it further resolved that this body enthusiastically endorses Read Across America and recommits our community to engage in programs and activities to make America's children the best readers in the world. Signed by me this 16th day of February 2015." Let me present this to y'all.
And before they finish, I do wanna say a word of thanks to Chila Armour and Matt Holston and Rhonda Harlow and all of the people that, EEA, that helped put our staff development day together today over the high school. Great job, and we appreciate all your efforts. Let's give them one more hand, please.
That it? We're gonna recognize Ron Garrison. Give us a report on school safety.
I had the opportunity last Friday to attend a six-hour in-service with the Oklahoma State School Board Association on school safety, preparation, and natural disasters. It was well-attended, over 300 were in attendance there. They have a huge lectorium in every school. And I did give you a handout of a couple of things that may be of interest to you. The first presenter was Dr. Mariota, and I gave that to you, what she emphasized. And it's for principals, teachers, and parents about being prepared for the storm, after the storm's recovery, and then the new normal, which is the heating part of it. She went into a lot of detail, which I don't have time to cover it all. And every school will be somewhat different, and the parents will be somewhat different. But it needs to be from the principal to the teachers to the parents on this type of information. The second part came from Mr. Ashwood, who is Director of Oklahoma Department of Emergency Management, and Kim Ed Carter, who is Director of the Oklahoma Office of Homeland Security. Most of their time was spent discussing the Oklahoma School Security Institute, which was created by the Oklahoma State Legislature as part, well, it was recreated in the spring of 2013, and it was part of the recommendation from the Oklahoma Commission on School Security, which was chaired by Enid Deputy Lieutenant Governor Todd Lamb. So, and the big issue on these, and I gave everybody a copy, is they emphasize all the programs that they have approved, and they want to come out and they want to help schools with all the things that are listed here. They do seminars, they do emergency planning for schools, they help principals if they need the help. They will be speakers at assemblies. They want to be worked and want to come out and visit schools. So, and I'll make this available to new principals, but some of them may wanna use this. One of the things that it also, that they talked about, and they're hoping that schools are doing this because it's part of what Lieutenant Governor Lamb and his group recommended, was having a phone tippy in Oklahoma to call. And they gave me a lot of these to bring back, and I'll give it on to Amber, and they're supposed to be posted in schools. And so when the opportunity presents itself, they can make the call, they can tell us what they think is going on, and they can answer the questions. These will be available to principals. The next speaker was, that we had was Dr. Robert Rowmeyer from Moore Public Schools. He was superintendent, just been appointed superintendent after the tornado went through the district, probably two of their schools. It was very traumatic for him. He had two young people, children, in the schools there, and not knowing what was going on and what was happening to them in addition to his other duties and services was traumatic. He fought through the day on how the day went, and it was very difficult. And he emphasized the one thing that they're working on that would make it, if something like this, whatever, any type of disaster, is communication. They lost all communication, and when you think about power, no power, and how you communicate with no cell phones, no regger phones, no any way to communicate and see how schools are doing and what they need to help, it was very difficult. And they're working on that to come up with something that is not relied upon the grid that might be down in a disaster. So, and they're looking at, he said, some kind of Milwaukee Toffee. They make really good ones now that are not reliant on anything except Milwaukee, the Milwaukee Toffee. So they're looking into that, but that was his biggest issue was how do you make decisions, help people, and you can't communicate with them? The next, our next speaker was Gary England, and he was there to entertain us. More than provide a lot. He had videos of lots of Oklahoma tornadoes and even videos of the ones that have hit Moore the last several years. And talked about how, what causes tornado, storms and all that, and answered questions about it. He also had loopers from Channel 9, which wasn't educational, but it was funny. So anyway, he entertained us for an hour and a half, okay, so it was okay. The last thing that he did was they had four attorneys from the Oklahoma State School Board Association, and I gave this copy of the items that they cover on legal considerations. And it mentions that some of the things that were passed that are now legal for schools that they need to do is recommendations from Lieutenant Governor Lamb's study and by the legislature in 2013. But the 10, it mentioned the 10 drills that are required each year all have to be reported to the state. They went through and emphasized for each district, this needs to be done because, like you said, some aren't doing it, and they need to be doing this. And I guess all have to be recorded and sent except for the fire drills, which go to the local fire department. And then there's some that need to go to local, copies to local responders for responders. So I brought that information back for principals, and I'll share that with them. So I've opened for questions, if that's I can answer them. Hard to put five or six hours in or three or four minutes, but I was given a time limit.
Well, board members, I did wanna mention to you that a little bit later in the meeting, we'll hear from Amber on a crisis communications report. But I did also wanna let you know that I've asked all of the campus principals to provide me with a prioritized list of safety and security campus needs. So we're gonna kinda collect all of that data and be prioritizing that for the entire district such that we can either incorporate some of that in next year's budget, or if we can't afford to do that, given the legislative financial toll that we're gonna be faced with, we may be looking at rolling some of that into the next bond issue, bond election. Nevertheless, the campus administrators are the ones that are out there on a daily basis, and they know what their needs are in regard to safety and security, and those are already starting to roll in. And I think that'll be a good exercise for us to go through, both at the campus level and at the district level. So you'll be hearing more about that as we go through the next few months. So Ron, we appreciate you attending that meeting for us. Any questions of Ron before he cuts out?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gilsthorpe, talk to us about transportation, please.
As you can tell, Ron, I don't get out very much. The last time I was a part of a group like this, you all were sixth graders. They called me Mr. G back then. And I, too, have, losing my voice, so I'll try to keep this as short as I possibly can. Marlene has put a handout on the table showing an overview of the Transportation Department and future bond issue need for your review. Three years ago, we put in a computer routing system called TransFinder, and we were fortunate enough to lure her back into the business. She retired six years ago from the high school as a computer applications teacher. And so we just managed to bring her back, and now she's in charge of our TransFinder, which is our routing system. I'm gonna give you a little bit of information about what TransFinder does. It's a routing system that lets us have access to Inf finder I, in which our students, their parents, our school employees can go to our website, and they can put in their address. Their address will then come up on the screen and show them what schools they go to, whether they are in a bus zone or in a walk zone. If they're in a bus zone, it'll tell them what time the bus will be there, the number of the bus, and what location that bus will be at in the mornings. And it does the same thing for the afternoon routes. And so it's really, it's been a real boost to us in our department.
You know, when we moved next door to the new building, part of that in the front is gonna be a welcome center, and that'll be a nice tool for her to have when they come in there and register their kids.
I'm gonna hit you with some figures right down that are a little bit mind-boggling. The Enid Public School District operates 38 bus routes daily. We transport 3,200 students to and from school, and there are 14 special education routes, 24 non-mandated bus routes that we choose to operate. These routes travel over 350,000 miles in town each and every year. We have over 560,000 students get on and off these school buses every year. You have 3,200 students every day getting on those school buses, and you do that for 174 days. You get a half a million children getting on and off those buses every year. We also transport 60,000 students on our buses and activity buses, buses or activity vehicles to over 1,000 out-of-town activities every school year. And we utilize 1,500 vehicles to do this. And we travel approximately 300,000 miles on activities, just of activity trips alone. This travel includes our activity buses, our yellow buses, our nine activity vans and Suburbans. In addition to the daily routes and activities, we also transport 75 students from each elementary school to the YMCA every afternoon for the afternoon school program. We transport 300 students every day across town for seven-hour athletics, and we transport students from a high school and a low tech four times daily. Due to our increased enrollment in the last four or five years, we've been forced to bring some of our old spare back into service, so we're now, we're a little bit limited to the number of buses that we have available when we do send them out of town, or if we have mechanical problems and we have to use these buses for our routes. Now, like your transportation director, our fleet's getting old and worn out. We have indicated on your handouts that the vehicles we feel need to be replaced or moved out of active service are highlighted in yellow. While many of these vehicles have high mileage on them, mileage is not the most determining factor of why we need to replace these vehicles. The mileage on your handouts showed they were recorded in October of 2014. Wear and tear on the vehicles that's been serviced for 12 years is probably the most deciding issue when considering when a vehicle is in need of replacement. Improvements to safety has greatly improved on new buses being manufactured now. Everything from compartmentalized seating to braking components have been improved over the last few years, and they produce the second safest mode of transportation in the United States behind air travel. While our regular fleet of buses is in need of updating, and equally pressing issues with the activity vans, the Suburbans, and the activity buses, these vehicles are on the road each and every day throughout the school year. Our newest activity bus is 16 years old and has 400,000 miles on it. Our oldest activity bus is 22 years old and has almost 1 million miles on it. Our newest Suburban that we have in service right now is three years old and 75,000 miles. We have included a synopsis of activity travel that we may already complete so far this year. Keep in mind that we are just beginning our spring sports campaign, and this is our heaviest travel time of the year. In addition to our bus fleet, the maintenance department, the IT department, the campus police department, and the driver's education vehicles are also in need of attention. These departments are operating vehicles that have been handed down to them over the years from our department to keep them operating. I know this is a quick overview of the department. If you have any questions or you need any more information, I'll be happy to give to you.
So the last page of this handout is really the most pressing needs when we go to the voters with the next transportation bond, right?
Exactly.
Which is $2.5 million worth of new vehicles?
Yes, sir. That includes every department.
Ken, do you think that gets us in a good position?
That would get us in an excellent position to go forward with it, yes.
How many vehicles were purchased during the last bond issue?
We purchased nine.
All at the same time?
All at the same time. They were sixty passenger buses that we purchased.
And that was... What's the preventive maintenance schedule?
The preventive maintenance schedules, they're brought in every year. We have, every day they're inspected by the mechanics. They go out and start every bus, they do the preventive maintenance for them. They're brought in every year and during the summer, and we go through all the components, all the braking, all the electrical systems, everything on them.
Is that regulated by federal regulations?
It is by federal regulation and state regulations. We have to inspect every school bus every year, and to do the inspection, it's a two-day operation. You have to take down every component of it, break it down, and go through everything that's on there, and make sure everything's operating the way it is.
And where are those records kept?
They're kept in the bus garage.
Do those get audited at all?
Every year.
What agency?
The State Department of Education sends an audit team here that goes through our records every year. Marlene spends most of her time during school year doing the routing and taking care of the audits that come through. They check all of our drivers' records, they have to have physicals, they have to have random drug screenings, they have to have drug screens when they're hired. All the maintenance records for the vehicles are inspected.
Colin, that's part of our regional accreditation officers visit when they do our special investigation.
And that next one's scheduled for April 16th?
Yes, sir.
Jim, I have a question. It's not about your report, but just you mentioned we have 3,200 students that ride that.
Right.
Other than special needs, how do you determine who rides and who doesn't?
There's a two-mile limit that was set by the board several years ago, and we try to stay as close to that two-mile limit as we can. There are some exceptions in the district that we transport students on non-mandated bus routes. For instance, Peggy's School over there tapped, we shut down Cleveland School about 25 years ago. And we told them at that time that we would transport them to the next school, which was tapped. There's also a major highway, 81, that separates the housing area from the school, so we provide transportation of that. We did the same thing when we shut down Harrison School. We transport to Monroe, and we transport to McKinley. And there are certain areas in town that, you know, that do get transportation because of reasons like that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Do we have any sort of map layout of how many children lie outside of where the bus routes were?
Yes, ma'am. On the TransFinder, we can produce that for you, but on the TransFinder system, it shows every student in the district. Every morning, Marlene GeoCodes from Power School, all the changes in the district, and they come up on our screen. We know where every student is located, has all their addresses, and then it shows them, you know, what school they go to and what location they're in.
So we feel good, we're not missing like groups of children that might need transportation?
No, no. Every student, in fact, the count this morning was 7990 something. Every student is brought up on the screen.
Now, what does come up sometimes on the reverse of that is a kid that might be living within a two-mile radius and does not qualify for transportation, but then their parent, if they don't have a vehicle, then they gotta find a ride to somebody else. And legally, we're not supposed to transport them within, if they live within a two-mile radius of the campus.
And there are hard, there are some cases that we take on an individual basis, and we look at it, and if there's something that we can do as a school district, we try to do it for them. You know, we can't do it for everybody, but there are some cases.
And as far as the big charter buses, roughly how old are those?
The newest one is 16 years old, the oldest one's 22 years old. And one of the problems that we're having with the charter buses right now is when we do have mechanical problems, finding parts for them is really difficult. The aftermarket industry quits manufacturing parts after about 12 years. So we have to sabotage ABC Bus out of Dallas, it's our supplier for the vanos that we use. And they have a boneyard of buses down there that they rob from, and so keep ours running.
And where is that on this last page? Are they on here? Yeah, I know, but as far as the replacement, are they on the last page?
They're on, should be on the big sheet. We were looking at the... The 1993... The nineteen ninety-three and the nineteen ninety-six. Okay. They're highlighted in yellow.
They're about a hundred-and-fifty thousand a piece?
Um, about that, right. And that's gonna be, that's gonna be a used bus that's probably seven, eight years old. And it'll have two-hundred-and-fifty thousand miles on it.
And how many miles do they say those can?
Well, ninety-three mile, we, we got one that had about three-hundred thousand on it. We've got a million on it right now, so we get a lot of use in them. But they're on the road every day.
Yeah, they make them to run that much, that many miles.
I just wanna make a comment, though, that over the years, even prior to serving on school board, I know that the public school system has been a partner with different entities in Enid and has furnished buses for different events.
And we do that.
And I will tell you that even with that number of miles, Jim, y'all do a great job of keeping those buses up and, uh, and I've never ridden on one that I was embarrassed to, to be on. So, thanks for all the hard work you guys do.
Appreciate it.
For you, um, did we get the deal worked out with Leadership Oklahoma? Are we providing that one?
We're providing that bus, yes.
Yeah, the whole, uh, the Leadership Oklahoma group for the entire state is gonna be in here, uh... When is it? In a month or so?
It's, um, the end of April. Uh, Christ day.
Interesting.
Yeah. So, uh, Jim was able to work out charter bus for them, one of ours, to run them around town while they're here and they were very appreciative of that. It'd be a nice opportunity for us to show off some of our good, so appreciate you doing that. Any questions for Jim? I would echo what Ernie said. You guys do a great job with what you have to work with. I know it's tough to keep those buses up all the time and, uh, and also the employees hired all the time and...
We've been very fortunate here. You know, we don't have a bus parked out the edge of town with a sign that's saying we need drivers.
Yeah. I mean, do you have all the drivers you need?
Right now, we have all the drivers, right.
Jim, thanks for what you do. We appreciate it. Marlene, you too. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Bring us back to Amber.
I think we are gonna break to go into our session and come back and do...
Executive session, okay? We are gonna move our executive session up in the agenda then, so...
And we're actually gonna move into my office. The board and I, um, and Doug are gonna go in there, so everybody else can stay in here and then we'll reconvene in a little bit with the remainder. If y'all wanna stay, that's fine. If you wanna cut out, that's fine, too.
Yes.
We need the motion to move into executive session?
So, moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, Joe, do you have enough voice left to make a statement?
I'll certainly try. Let the record show that the board returned from executive session at day oh three. And that we discussed employment, presented Title Twenty-Five, Section Three-O-Seven-B-One, State Statutes, present in the executive session with the board members who are present for leading tonight, as well as Dr. Floyd and, and Mr. Stafford and part of Amber.
So, we're back, are back to executive session. We've done a lot of jumping around on our agenda tonight and we are gonna just go ahead and move to item nine. Uh, item nine A, discussion and possible action to approve hiring an assistant superintendent.
All right. Well, upon Ms. Howe running off and leaving us, uh, we'd like to recommend filling her spot with Mr. Doug Stafford, Assistant Su for Secondary Education.
Salute. Second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on that?
No.
Give her a cake and a plaque.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome back.
We didn't have a date in mind. That was one thing we didn't know.
Yes, uh, Melanie's official start date in Duncan is April one and I've been working with Dr. Pennington, Superintendent in Wonka, uh, on Mr. Stafford's start date. It is no later than May one. So, um, we're gonna arm wrestle for it. I think he's a lot taller than I am. So, but again, most people are. Somewhere between April one and May one. Isn't that right, Doug?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Well, that said, I'm gonna try to get us back into our regular agenda and let's go back to item three, regular business. And, uh, I was entertaining a motion to approve the consent items.
I have a question. Is Amber going to do her report? Would Amber be asking to?
Did we pause before we got to Jim?
Yeah.
Let's do Amber's report.
Okay. I'm here for the evening. Well, I want to thank, uh, I want to say thank you for allowing me to talk about this topic. It is one crisis communication I'm very passionate about. I study. I wanna learn everything I can about and then I wanna use it as little as I have to. Uh, but we know that that is not the case. It's important for us to be ready. And we use our crisis communication plan, um, at some level on a very regular basis. So, uh, so I'm gonna share with you tonight specifically the plan we have in place that supports our crisis response plan, but it's how we're gonna handle communication in a crisis. You gotta turn it on. Okay. So, to tell you a little bit about the plan, and I did email it to you last week and I appreciate, um, you guys looking at it in advance and, and learning about it. I wanna tell you a little bit about how it was developed. It was developed initially in two thousand and four and we update it annually and make changes and it never lasts twelve months for changes. I'm constantly writing notes in it as we learn things and as we get better. It's very much inspired by the National School Public Relations Association, training I've attended, tools that are available to us and best practices that they recommend. And then also the Oklahoma Emergency Management Training that I attended several years ago that focuses on the responsibilities of a PIO officer. It's the training that you take before you go to Washington T D.C. and take the FEMA training. Um, it's very beneficial. It was very much shaped by my experience, um, when I went and helped with the Moore tornadoes. Um, we had a team of communication professionals who went down to assist Moore um, for about a month after the tornado's there. I was there about four or five days after the event and as, uh, Mr. Garrison mentioned, uh, a little earlier in this evening, there was so much to be learned and I'll share with you a little bit as we go through some of the things, ways that our plan changed as a result of my experience there. And then also, it's just shaped by other school districts because we share. That's the great thing about educators and about educators. We share ideas. Um, and then we share our plans as well. There were a lot of people who requested, including OSSVA has shared it, um, in their, in their quarterly magazine in a number of different ways. So, what is our plan? What is the intent of it? What does it do? Um, it informs our stakeholders about what has occurred whenever there's a crisis, what the district is doing to address the issue and how the situation will be prevented in the future. There's really no amount, no communication that ever goes out that should not address those three components. So, the specifics that you'll find, that moves really slow. I'm gonna talk faster than that's gonna move. Um, the specific components that you'll find in our plan is an initial plan. When an emergency happens, even before we know all the details, what is it that we need to do and who do we, what, who do we need to have in place? What will their role be? Um, it also designates responsibilities to different people, um, during the crisis and as we're gathering facts. There are specifically tools for how to gather facts about the event. Some worksheets that I can just grab. I keep it underneath my desk. Mine is not a fancy copy. It's one I can use every time we need it and then shred or keep if we need to. Um, so there are specific tools about how we gather what's going on in the situation. There are also guiding questions that help us make decisions about the best way to respond. It outlines all the different communication methods that we have available and we have a very extensive toolbox available to us in the event of a crisis or even for regular communication. It includes our media guidelines, what we expect when we work with the newspaper, with different news media outlets and what they can expect from us, as well as the tools that would be necessary, um, especially if we have a lot of people who came in, uh, had interest and wanted to cover an event. Um, contact information for all of our personnel and then, um, a way to gather key messages in sample letters, phone, phone messages, different areas, methods of communication we might use. So, sometimes it's best to talk about what it isn't, to explain it. It is not the crisis response plan and that is what we're going to do to deal with the emergency. Um, you're probably familiar with the white split book that we use at the district level. We are in the process of updating that plan and I think Dr. Floyd mentioned earlier, we're gonna meet, meeting with emergency personnel to look over some updates to it as well.
We have a meeting, uh, next Monday at two o'clock with the city and county emergency management folks.
Yes. And then we also have a building level for each individual school, what their responses will be in different, uh, different, um, uh, situations that they have to deal with for emergencies. And we are required by law and comply to provide all of those building level plans with different emergency agencies, um, across our community. So, for example, when we worked with EPD initially when that law was passed to let them know that we're gonna be providing a copy of all of these safety plans, they even asked for enough copies to have one in the back of every patrol car that's on the street. So, they've been wonderful to work with to make sure we're prepared. Um, it is not a one-size-fits-all approach. It's really intended to, 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 uh, address things on a complete spectrum, which might be a situation that occurs between two students that may or may not require mass communication. That may be more about just working with their student, with their families. But it could mean that we need to communicate more if it's something that, that, um, uh, resulted in concerns or fears by other students to somewhere in the middle, kind of what we experienced a couple of months ago, where it's not a situation that occurs on campus, but rather something is happening to our, in our community and we are responding to make sure that our children are safe, all the way to if we had an incident on campus and there was an immediate situation and we needed to communicate about that issue. It is not a substitute for the trusted relationships that are built between our parents and our educators. Um, very often after an event, um, in fact, after the situation a month or two last month, we, um, when you guys may recall when they were, um, pursuing someone after they were trying to arrest and we had to have lockdowns at the schools, we get lots of thank yous and good jobs and lots of feedback about those things. And to be honest with you, a lot of times they come to me. It has nothing to do with what I do that day. It is about the fact that the children are with people, the principals and the teachers who those, who those parents trust, um, to take care of their children. So, it's not a substitute for that, but it complements it and it's also never finished. We're always working on it and making it better. So, when an incident occurs, because it's not one-size-fits-all, we have to have guiding questions that help us assign what it is that we're gonna do, how are we gonna communicate, what do we need to communicate? So, some of the considerations and decisions we make, um, when we're trying to decide is this for mass communication or is this working for a specific, working to reach a specific audience? Is, um, and I'm gonna read these 'cause they're very important. They're an important part of the plan. Will this decision place the students in further danger and necessarily result in a greater loss of instructional time? We need to know the answer to that question to make our decision. Does the district have advanced notice of a threat that would allow parents to make well-informed decisions for their families? A key component of the communication plan is making sure that we not only keep students safe, but that we maintain trust, um, with parents and with the public. Has the situation already generated publicity? Is it high-profile? As you know as much as anyone, especially with social media, some things, whether true or untrue, are really out in the public, may, public eye maybe even before we know that there's a situation. So, obviously, the answer to this more and more becomes, becomes yes. Will additional communication allow the school to return to normal more quickly? And will a lack of communication contribute to mistrust between the public and the district? And every single decision should be about putting safety first, focusing on building trust, and then also communicating responsibly. So, as I mentioned, we have a pretty extensive toolbox, um, of, of communication methods available to us. Um, you'll see a few listed here. Um, we do use social media just like anyone else, uh, to communicate with the public. We work with our partners at the, um, at the News and Eagle, our partners at the radio stations. We have a system called Blackboard Connect that I'm gonna talk in greater detail about in just a moment that will allow us to send emails, texts, and phone messages, um, to staff and to parents. And that, it is a great resource because what we want to do, especially at the beginning of an incident, is to use those resources that are available to us that are an unfiltered message. We want it to come from our mouths to the ears of parents, rather than, rather than there being a filter and maybe that message not being exactly what it needs to be to get to that parent. And then we also have a great resource, you know, maybe an oldie but a goodie, but that letter in the backpack home and calling, especially if it's an incident that occurred that maybe was not an issue at school, but would feel like parents need to know, even though maybe it did cause a disruption at school, to call the parents and let them know that backpack's, that letter is in the backpack. So, as we're making decisions about how to communicate and what method to use, there are more questions that we ask. I feel like I'm missing one. Okay. Uh, there it is. Yes. Um, well, first of all, it's also, it's gonna matter what, what, what is the threat? Is it on campus? Is it off campus? Um, obviously, the urgency of the issue is gonna drive this decision. What is the timeline of events? It is not uncommon, in fact, I would say more often than not, a lockdown lasts ten to fifteen minutes because we did not know if there was a threat or not and we don't take chances. When EPD calls and they tell you to lock the doors, you lock the doors and then you ask questions about what you need to do. So, a lot of times, it really doesn't even disrupt the day. It was a safety precaution and we found out that really we're in a situation that's okay. What is, what is the needed response for safety? Do we need parents to pick up? Are we gonna be moving the students? Do we need the parents to know that their students are at a safe location different than where they dropped them off at school that day? Is there a call for action for parents or for the community? Is there something that we need parents and community members to do so that we can make sure that students, um, are more safe than they might be in the current situation? Then this is an important one because when we move, we move a lot of people. And when we communicate that there's an emergency, it impacts a lot of people. A lot of people start to make, make decisions. Um, we wanna make sure that what we're doing is responsible and that it does not impact the ability of law enforcement to do their job if they're responding to help us. You know, for example, if there is an evacuation and we have moved students to a specific location, we do not wanna drive parents to the location that was not safe for the students, um, to be in the first place. We wanna make sure that we communicate responsibly. And then another big one, and I rely a lot on the principals for this, is there's usually a communication method that's worked well for them before or something their parents are used to. They may know what percentage of their parents like to use email. I mean, that input is very valuable. So, I mentioned before that we really have to evolve, get better, make improvements. And we make that assessment, um, after each situation that we deal with. Um, and I had also mentioned that Blackboard Connect will send emails, send texts, and send phone messages. Well, that is only as effective as where those messages get to. And Colin and I have visited with, about this a little bit and then we had another family that called as well. In the last situation, we discovered that not every parent email received the message. So, we began to diagnose that problem and look and see what we needed to do. And to, to understand a little bit about how Blackboard works, Power School, which you guys hear about all the time for a lot of different reasons, um, gathers our student information. And then every night, in a magical way I'll never understand, it updates Blackboard Connect with the contact information. Well, uh, Power School only holds one parent email. But some of our schools will say like a parent email, semicolon, another parent email in the same field. Well, when that goes to Blackboard Connect, it didn't mean anything to it. So, the solution to our problem, we felt, was twofold. First of all, the schools that had put, put the emails in that one field, technology wrote another magical program that now separates those emails and now they are importing as two different parent emails. So, that was a fix, but then there are people who might not have two emails on file. So, we talked with the company and we launched last week for our employees and will be launching it for parents next week, the Blackboard Connect portal, where they can establish their preferences for how they want to receive communication. So, I can go in as a parent. I log on using my child student ID number and I can go in and put in up to ten phone numbers and ten emails and I can specify if this is an attendance call, I want a text, I want an email, I want a phone call, I want, oh! If this is an outreach phone call, and we use Blackboard Connect for outreach all the time, just from our district account, fifteen thousand calls just this month and that's just from our district level account, not the building level accounts. Um, you can set those same preferences for outreach calls and then for emergency as well. And one of the things that we learned in the last emergency, midday events where we need to contact parents by phone has been difficult. And here's why. Because if they, if we call the primary number, unless the parent has specified that they want their cell phone to be their primary number, we're calling home. Well, that's not an ideal time, that's not an ideal place to call in the middle of the school day. If it's an emergency, it will call their cells, but it also calls their work phones, which can really be problematic for some parents as well. Now, some employers, you know, if it's not a situation that really has that urgency, it does create problems for families. One of the things we learned in last month's event is that we can use texts efficiently, efficiently for this and effectively for... One of the things we learned in last month's event is that we can use texts efficiently for this and effectively for this. I've always been a little bit leery about using texts because it limits me to so few characters. I can't say, this is what's happened, your child is safe and this is what we're doing in a text. But what we did last month, and it was very well received, is we were able to say, we've had a situation we want you to be aware of, go to our website for more information, go to Facebook for more information. Um, so fortunately, that's another tool that we have to use. So we've launched this, this, uh, portal to employees. It'll be available to parents next, um, week. This is what the portal looks like. They go in, they log in, they set their preferences. They can add, if grandma wants to get all the phone calls about when the assemblies are, they can add grandma's telephone number. If they want to add, um, an extra cell phone, they can do that. They have full control for ten phone numbers and ten emails, um, to set their preferences. And then there's also a mobile app that they can utilize to set their preferences as well as to, uh, look at previous messages. And as someone who notoriously, um, does not check my voice mail at home, uh, this will be very valuable to be able to go in and to look at these one right after another, what, um, has been sent to my kids. Um, so I think we're going to see more parents who are using the tool more effectively. And I think we'll definitely have more parents who will place that cell phone as their primary number. So when they get an outreach call, it's not just going to their home phone, it's also going to their cell phone. But they decided that, not me, so I don't have to worry about that's a problem for them. So that is a very brief and fast overview of the process of communication. Uh, I would be very happy to answer any questions or get any, anything.
Can you go back one slide?
Yes.
I just wanted to see if I was really seeing old girl gorba chick.
Yeah. That's, that's just a screenshot. I didn't, yeah, that's not mine, but, um, you know, I've, I've noticed when the vendors do the demos, there's a lot of movie stars who are always in their systems and sports, sports athletes.
How are we going to communicate, uh, the availability for the parents?
That's a great question. We're going to use all the typical methods, phone calls, all those things on the toolbox. We'll do what we always do. Here's what they do that's really cool and cuts down on a huge amount of work for us and for parents. The last, not the last thing we'll do, but after they, after they know it's available, the emails that we do have on file, they will email them, um, the message with all the instructions, including the child's, um, student ID number. So even though there are multiple places you can get that number, it'll be nice to have it handy right there in that email. And that was something that they just do as part of launching the product, so that was good.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
I just, uh, sorry, go ahead, go ahead. You said that the actual response plan is going to be updated?
Yes.
In the next month or two?
Yes, we're meeting on the twenty-third. Um, we'll be revising the safety plan, getting feedback from law enforcement. And yes, it'll be finished up soon. And then everybody will get updated copies of it in advance.
I think Vance is represented in that meeting. Will that come to that meeting the next month?
They, I don't know that they're in attendance. We certainly didn't invite them. I don't know if they're in attendance at that meeting, but they do receive our annually updated plans every year.
Who's the, uh, are you a contact or is it somebody else?
Security forces.
Probably the security forces, yeah. But if there's a chance, we could have a couple other copies out there.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, yes.
From my office and then also the command and control section over there.
That's, we'd be happy to provide that. And a, a key component of the building level plans, especially those that have students on base, they even have a plan for if base is locked down and we're not, how, how they'll make sure children are safe and can get what they need to get.
And I just wanted to thank Amber, uh, for what she did tonight. Uh, I felt a little bit like her stalker o- over this. Um, because when we, when we had the last, uh, notice that was sent out, when this was brought to my attention, uh, my, uh, son was in one of the schools that was locked down, my wife got the tech for the email, I had not, um, and as soon as I sent the question, she was, she gave an immediate response to that, even over the weekend when I had some questions about the material she sent out. Uh, it was an immediate response, which made me feel a little, little guilty about sending it on a weekend night and she responded, but, um, as a parent, when, when you get this information, um, i- it's so important to get the accurate information as opposed to social media starts and then, you know, it's, it's like the, the link game in, in grade school. You don't know what's going to be at the end of it. So, I just want to say thank you.
You're very welcome. And I appreciate your feedback because it made us better, because now we have the portal. So, appreciate that.
Any other comments, questions?
Good job, Amber.
Yes, thank you, Amber. We don't want to skip any other items on our agenda, so is there anyone signed up for audience to visitors? I don't know.
Do you have a sheet, Amber?
Did anybody sign up?
No, sir.
Alright.
I had to get his letter of intent.
Yeah.
Let's go on then. Now we're at the consent items. And I would entertain a motion to approve those consent items. They're approved unless we want to pull one out to discuss.
Will we approve?
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Brings us on down then to the encumbrances. Carly, you want to lead us through those?
Certainly. General fund encumbrances, purchase orders nineteen seventy-one through two thousand eighty-one for a total of ninety-four thousand eight twenty-eight fifty-nine. Recommend approval. Will we approve?
Thank you. Okay, got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any more?
General fund change orders, uh, since the fourteenth of January for purchase orders one through nineteen seventy, total amount one hundred ninety-five thousand one sixty-one ninety-two. Recommend approval. Will we approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three there.
Building fund encumbrances, uh, purchase order sixty-seven through seventy for a total of fifty thousand twelve dollars and eighty-five cents. Recommend approval. Will we approve?
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Municipal tax facility encumbrances, purchase orders seven through nine for a total of a hundred thirty-eight thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars. Recommend approval. Will we approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question. Yeah, the fifty-sixth he says the Frank Art, where are they from?
I'm sure.
That's what I assumed, but that's really neat because he is an even higher graduate. That's a great piece. Just curious.
It'll be really nice.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number five.
Activity fund for donations and gifts, purchase orders forty-six through forty-eight for a total of seven hundred forty dollars and seventy-five cents. Recommend approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. It brings us to, uh, time for our audit report. I would like to recognize Mr. Carroll.
You have your audit and you also have a short version of the first file, or we can do the long version.
So play it a little bit, you're forty years.
The sad part is I haven't been doing this long. Uh, this is the audit for the thirteen fourteen six over here. I have given you, uh, a smaller version of it, but I want to go over a few things. There are three different letters within the audit. The first one is on, uh, page four, five, and six, three pages long. It talks about an adverse and volatilizations. That's for the federal government. They don't want things being on a GAAP basis, which is an accrual basis, a stable loan ones you own on modified cash basis, which is much more conservative. So it has all that information in there, so what would adverse be because we're not on a GAAP basis. But there's also an opinion in there saying that you are an unqualified being, that's what you want. It goes around a regular order basis with the stable loan. A regular order basis means that we only show our revenues when we've actually collected them. But we show our expenditures as debt against the monies we have on hand at any time we do an order, have approved these encumbrances. So we may not have received those items by the end of the year, but that money has to stay in the year that you obligated it. You can't report it, have to stay right there. So it's a very conservative basis of accounting. Since it's not your money, that's good. That's what you want to have happen. There are three major financial statements. There's an exhibit A, B, and C. Exhibit A is a balance sheet. It shows the governmental fund types that the district has. You have general, special revenues. Special revenues made up of two different accounts that are put in the, uh, combining statement right after these financial statements. But it's your build, your, uh, building fund and your math program. Debt services, your sinking fund, that's the money you have on hand or will have on hand to pay off our debt service. The capital projects or your bond funds. We have many of those. We also have a combining statement for that. The district funds, that's your trust and agencies, that's your activity funds, and your gift and endowment funds. The account group is general long-term debt. It's an informational column. It shows you the money that you have on hand to pay off your debt and what money you're going to have to collect in seven years to pay off remaining portions. The last sentence is the total column, which shows the cash on hand, the cash equivalents, any amounts that are available for that service, amounts to provide for general long-term debt, the liabilities then, or you want your checks payable and your encumbrances. Encumbrances are what you had to junk at the end of the year, but we had not received goods or services, so it's like a payable. That's the money that will be paid up, um, and then soon very quickly collect those goods and services because you can't pay for them and pay back to receive them. The fund balance then is where you set your fund type, whether it's restricted or not. You can assign balances in the general fund to get at your general operating. That's where you operate through. The rest of them are restricted for certain, um, types of expenditures. Exhibit B is an income statement. Again, it's the governmental fund types. It just does not show the trust and agencies because those are money that are given to you, you're responsible for it, but it's not your money. It's your money to set up small activity accounts, trust funds that have been designated for you for specific uses, but it's not your money, so it doesn't show up on any of those statements. Shows the, um, major types of revenues, the major sources of the types of expenditures, excess of revenues collected over under expenditures, any adjustments to the prior year encumbrances. You can see in the general fund, we had a hundred and eight thousand. On the special revenue, we had two hundred fifty-four. These are items that we had uncovered, we had ordered for whatever reason, we didn't see those goods or services. So we don't lose that money. It's brought back into the next year on sole items that we can cancel. We also have some other financing sources. We have some stock warrants. Those warrants that have been issued. It's been lost, it's going to come back in so we can cancel it and bring it forward also. Transfers between accounts. We brought in fifty thousand dollars from a bond fund that had, uh, was paid for everything that we had set up in the bond fund. A particular sinking fund that had paid off. Those monies could be moved back into the general fund. You also had a collection in your capital projects of five million eight hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. That was a sale of bonds. That's where that shows up. Those monies came in, we had then paid off the portion of that bond. And with the bond funds and capital projects, that's what happens. We collect that money and then we use it, it goes away. They don't stay there. So I want to place that money down there. I'll talk about the other one later. But at the bottom, you can see that we had a decrease or a deficiency of revenue collected over expenditures in our general fund or our special revenue fund. We had an increase in the debt service because we had a new bond issue. We're going to collect money for two years before we pay it off. So there's going to be money coming in. After that two years, those dollars are going to go down because you're going to pay off your debt. The capital project also had a decrease because when we collect that money in bond fund, we have a project for it, or we're going to spend it. And once we collected it, those funds are going to go down. And I have a four L for a one. Your general fund and special revenue fund has an A. That's probably going to keep up for a while. You've done real good as a board, you've done real good as a district, making sure that you have sufficient funds. But right now, the state revenues are down, the federal monies aren't coming in like they were. The only thing that we're really having that's been consistent for right now is that warrant, and that hasn't been correct for twenty years. But we're going to get some money that's not going to cover up the losses that we're probably going to be receiving from the state. So the monies are not going to be, um, as sufficient as they have been in the past. And last several years, we've been talking about this, that at the time you had a fund balance, you had to make sure what you're spending on. And you've done a real good dollars for board and the community because you've done bond issues, you've done the things you needed to, uh, have out there to, um, either to start new buildings or make sure that the construction we have or sufficient are held right. You can have a math program, a city unit, you can also work with the Darkville County Educational Authority, make sure that you have other funds to do your projects. You've done a real good dollars for board and your community's been supporting of you and it shows in the facilities that you have right now. I just wanted to talk for a minute. That was kind of good, wasn't it, maybe? Talk about the state fund, we'll talk about having a duty. The fund balance has been for each one of the fund types. At the end of the year, you can see we had a decrease from the previous year. We had a carryover of around seven million dollars. For a still district this size, that's not a lot of money. There's a lot of dollars that goes through the district, all the funds and the responsibilities that you have. There's not a lot of money you kept up with, you're having form, that's good. But everything else has been going down as far as revenues, expenditures keep going up, your salaries go up, your utilities go up, your maintenance goes up. The bond issues have been good because you can only pay for capital projects out of your building fund or your bond funds. You can't use general fund money for capital projects. So if you don't have those items, you don't keep up with them. And there was a point in time years ago when I started in this, that the building fund generally held up for what it needed to be, needed to happen with the district, with the buildings and whatever. There's no way you have form to maintain enough dollars, um, in your building fund to maintain your values, let alone build new ones. So the way you as a board and the, and the district itself has fallen behind the district, that's great. Because it's maintained this district with terrific facilities. Exhibit C is a budget actual. Easy, you get an estimate that starts out your budget for your appropriation. You can't spend more than what you're going to appropriation. If you collect additional money, you can spend it if you go to supplemental appropriation. It has to be brought to the board, so it's going to be approved. And you have to approve it so it can increase your budget. Because you only can spend what's in your budget in your appropriation. On the general fund, there was no supplemental appropriation. You can see in the special revenues, we had supplements because of the difference between the original and final budget. And the debt service, there was no, uh, supplement done also. But the original and the final, then in the last column is what was actually collected and spent. Some same numbers are shown on the, uh, exhibit B under your encumbrance. Now, if you're following within the audit itself, I'm going to move to, uh, the additional sheets that I handed out. I'm going to show you the combining statements. There's a schedule A one, give you the special revenues. It shows the building fund, the municipal tax fund that the district has, the money on hand, and the liability to send any one of those funds. The total column then is what shows up on exhibit A, under the special revenues. Schedule A two is for your capital projects. It shows the, uh, different bond funds that you have. So the transportation bond fund, as it was not in there, I'm showing that because last year we had money. Then this year we'll send the rest of those dollars and there's no money left in there. But there's four different bond funds. That is the, uh, cash on hand. Any liabilities you have, want to pay or reserve from in terms of sending the fund balances in one of those fund, capital project funds. Next one deals with the trust and agencies. You've got a number of activity funds. You've got, uh, elementary, you have middle school, you have beginning high school, you have lunch fund. You also have a donation gift activity fund, and then you have a gift and endowment fund. There's a number of trust funds that you have. A lot of them go through these. I'm showing you the fund balances here, but within the elementary and high school, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars that go through there. Within middle school, there's tens of thousands of dollars that go through there. There's, the highest risk is in the activity funds. It's because it's cash. On your district level, you don't see a lot of cash. Most of them are straight deposits. The expenditures have a requisition. When it's purchased over, brought to you as a board, you approve it. It's not paid, you don't have those items coming in, so there's a lot of overs, some activity funds there. There's a lot of cash that goes through. There's some cash, spend a high. Then high school, there's probably two pages of sub accounts. Each one of those sub accounts has sponsors. They have to do what your treasurer and encumbrance, encumbrance clerk does. They have to make sure they receive the money on a daily basis, and turn it into the custodian on a daily basis. And it needs to be deposited daily. Not just from the overall view, but each individual account, because it all has to be added together to see what we have. Money has to be deposited any time that it's a hundred dollars or more. I guarantee you that it's a hundred dollars or more every day. So it's to be turned into those custodians and be deposited. It has to be received by the sponsor and turned in. And we will track that, we go through and we track the different receipts that they're approved. On the expenditure side, they have to make sure that there's a requisition before they buy it. Do they have money in their sub account? Because they can't spend the money from another sub account, just because they own something. They can't buy it unless there's money in their account. So they have to turn in a receipt or an invoice and a requisition before they can get approval for it. Once they buy that, there has to be an itemized invoice. It can't say supplies or items. It has to be itemized as to what they purchased, how much it was. It has to be signed by whoever made the purchase. If we wanna find out where it is, we need to know who to talk to. Matter of fact, that's the second requirement, that they sign the receipt when they do it. So there's a number of items that have to go through. Like I said, you have all these sub accounts, you have training to speak, you have to make sure they know what they're doing. You probably have to train them again, and then you need to train somebody else, so it's a continuing effort. And it's a trickleback, because it starts here, it starts with the administration, goes to the principals, and then on down. There are gatekeepers, and they're not popular people. Because they're gonna make sure that these people do what they're supposed to do. And sometimes they use me as an excuse.
All the time.
All the time. But there's a lot of money that goes through, so it's important to track it. You go to your notes on page five and six. I gave you a sheet for that also. The notes financial statements, important information. If you haven't read it, read it. It's not fun, it's not good, it's driven by accountants and driven by attorneys. It's not nice to read, but there's a lot of information in there. But on five and six, we talked about our long-term debt and the general long-term debt for the district. We have a bond payment coming up July one, two thousand and fifteen, for five million eight hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars that we'll pay off. And that takes care of the bonds that are outstanding right now. But if you turn the page, you'll see that we have a lease, a ground lease and a lease purchase with the Darkville County Educational Authority. This is what monies come from, where we're, where you've done all the construction. You've done your maintenance, you've done your upgrade. And this is where we'll pay off those bonds in the ensuing years. We will have payments for them until two thousand and four. But if we hadn't done that, we wouldn't have the money to take to do what we need. You don't have enough ad warrant based, a vote of bond issue to do what's been done. It can't be done anymore, just on the ad warrant, on the face that you have, without almost any mystery. So this is the way you do it, you sell bonds over a period of time. You open them and you sell them, and you bring them and you pay off, that keeps the tax base down. The taxpayers aren't having to pay additional dollars, because there's some new bond issue out there that you're trying to pay off. So it can be done on a continuing basis over a period of time, and not affect the taxpayer to a great extent. I told you that there are three letters. After the information is on there, there's two others. One deals with internal control. I don't have those on there. The first one deals with compliance and internal control, as our auditor goes on. The first letter deals with the financial presentation of the product and on the finance of the district. The second one deals with the internal control and compliance. That's when we go in and we check everything out. So we look at the financial statements, are they right? We check all the banks, so we run the banks, so we're looking to make sure what the expenditures are, are in the right areas, are the revenues for the funds, are they in the right year? Then we go into internal control, we're gonna check all your notes. We get to read all your board minutes. Which is about as much as I'm trying to see. We go through the expenditures. We pick a certain number of them, there's a certain dollar amount, we're gonna check every expenditure that are a dollar amount in each one of those funds. We're also gonna look at a certain number of other expenditures that go through there. Because everybody wants the big dollars to be right, we wanna make sure the small ones are right. We're gonna check the revenues, we're gonna make sure that they've been received, that they've been deposited during the bank. We're gonna look, like I said, at your board minutes, we're gonna look at payroll. We're gonna go through them, we're gonna check inventories. There's a number of things that we do when we do the audit, to make sure the internal controls are there, because we know the district has the policies and procedures in place. We also make sure that the district's on it, and the other people within the employees within the district are also doing what they're supposed to be doing. So we check that. We check your compliance with the state and federal regulations. I would let you know that there were no material significant efficiencies, and we found an internal control and compliance. That's all that we want to be said. The third letter then deals with our major federal programs. We also have to go in, since you're considered an A one thirty-three, and you spend more than five hundred thousand dollars in federal money. We have to come in and we do a specific audit on certain programs. Matter of fact, we have fifty percent of the expenditures that the district has, which means we have to pick programs that are gonna reach that amount. But we can't do the same program we did here. So over a period of time, we're gonna look at all the different programs that the district has. If we had found something wrong, this will be the next page that you have. It'd be on the schedule of finances question card. This breaks down for the federal government what we've done. Talks about the type of auditors report. Again, it says adverse. But it's adverse, because the financial statements are prepared on a regulatory basis of accounting. For the state of Oklahoma, it's unqualified, that's what you want. We had, under internal control, we had no material weaknesses, significant efficiencies, and there was no non-compliance. Federal wars, the same way. We had no material weaknesses or efficiencies. The type of the audit is unqualified, that is what you want. It sounds bad, but you want to be qualified, it was qualified, we found something wrong. We identified the major programs that we found that covered fifty percent of your programs. It was your pilot one cluster, your Carl Perkins, and your child nutrition. With a dollar threshold that we distinguish between a major program and a non-major is three hundred thousand dollars. If we had found something down below, we're set at section two, that's where we'd be listed. We had no material weaknesses and those significant efficiencies. I put in the last page here, there's a schedule of expenditures for federal wars. Only to see the federal programs that you have, and the number of dollars that you have. Consider it a page and a half of the programs that you deal with. The last four columns are the financial portion of the federal programs. First one is accrued or deferred monies, these are monies that we either had received and had not yet spent, or monies we had spent but we had not received last year. We have a thousand million dollars that we had not received by June thirty. Most of that's because we can't get this money back from the state until we actually spend it. We can have it encumbered, but if we don't have a warrant to go with that, they won't send us the money back until we do. This has to be claimed by June second. If we don't have those by June second, we don't get them. A lot of these are payroll. So we don't have that with that last payroll by that period of time. So these monies will be expended after that June second period. But if they come in later, depending on next year, we have to collect it all these dollars. We had receipts during the year of seven million three hundred and forty-five thousand. We expended six million eight hundred and ninety thousand. And at the end of the year, we had another six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars coming in at the end of the year. So there's a lot of money that goes through your federal programs. It's important to maintain requirements within the district and the employees to take care of these, because not only do I check on these, the federal government comes in and checks on these. The state comes in and checks on these. I think the state just came in this year and went and figured out the programs. They do a good job. They had a lot of money, they had a lot of responsibility, but they do a good job. These programs do a good job. The problem is, the federal government's not giving us much money to run these programs, and they just don't. Matter of fact, I'm back to my first letter for a list. The state, the federal government are not giving us money to use it. So if the who's you to be conservative at this point? I can work quick, I can go longer. If you have any questions, those are the ones.
Quick, somebody make the motion.
I also have left a letter with a just flight. I know you want me here. I have to be here, but the state wants proof that I have it here. So if you will sign this, I'll send it in with your audit. But I send one to the state auditor, the state department of education, and the federal attorney. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pat, thanks for the presentation. That's the first one of yours I've been through, so I was actually the guy that stayed away for most of it. But actually, the most important page is page twenty-two of that, and that is the no major findings. And that's obviously what I always turn to. And that says a lot about Carl and his shop and what they do on a daily basis. So we, we draw a little his feed all the time. We do wanna say thank you, Carl, for your and your shop's work on a daily basis. You do great work, good job. Thank you, Pat. Appreciate it.
With that, is there a motion to approve the audit, or accept the audit?
So.
Second. Any discussion? On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Do you oppose? Brings us to our district's national report.
In the interest of where the tea, we'll move right through that. If you look at the second page, actually, it's the only thing that's in the online agenda. And if anyone would like the multiple-page printed copy, I'd be glad to provide that. Okay, no takers. Very quickly, I'm not gonna read the numbers off, but just remind you that the collections and the over or under the estimates are found in the green columns. The expenditures, which are obligations or encumbrances, as Pat indicated. We do recognize our expenditures the minute we place an order, even though we don't have those goods. That's the first column in pink. And then the second column is the payments or warrants, as they're called in the state of Oklahoma, for the goods and services we have received. Then the next two columns are important, the unencumbered balance, that's how much we have left of the appropriation. It's not encumbered. And then the last column is the actual balance, which is the difference between collections and the actual payments that are made. And you can see that in the general fund, we're rather cash flush right now. And I know that we're probably going to either move fast very quickly or postpone my finance one-on-one talk about the budget in the interest of the length of the meeting. But one point that I do want to make, our largest source of local revenue, and our second largest source of revenue overall, is ad warrant taxes. That's about nine million dollars. That money comes in, in a very focused time period, from when people pay and banks pay their escrow accounts for taxes. They start coming in in December, and we receive them in January through March. So nine million dollars of our budget comes in pretty much all at once. So that's one of the reasons you're seeing such a high cash balance. That and the fact that we had a healthy carryover balance. The other point that I wanna make, I've talked a lot about federal programs. In order to receive that federal money, those federal programs are conducted with local and state revenue. We upfront fund that, and then we, I hate to use the word beg, but we get to jump through lots of hoops to get reimbursed for those expenses. As in filing detailed claims that go down to the individual tickets that a person collects when they go on craft development or professional development workshop. It shows the restaurant they went to and what they ate and drank for their supper. So there's, there's a huge amount of documentation that goes to the state department of education to be reimbursed for that. And we would be hard-pressed to conduct our federal programs without an adequate fund balance. So just a little editorial there, and we'll talk a lot more later on, probably at the next meeting, about what I call finance one-on-one, or I've come up with a semi-clever name, I'm calling it school finance viewed from the press box. Because we're not gonna get into the weeds, we're gonna kind of keep it short. You can look forward to that at our next meeting.
What Carl's actually talking about when he says finance one-on-one, I actually asked him to maybe bring us a report and do that, but at the same time, we thought Matt was gonna be here to hear it. So I can now ask him if maybe we can post probably until the next meeting when Matt's in town. So, does anybody have an issue with that?
No.
Yeah, well. You've heard the finance report is a motion to approve. Now, I got the first hand and second hand out of that. Any discussion? On paper, say aye. Do you oppose? Uh, next is the budget.
Okay, again, I'll be very brief. We'll go over the general fund at our next meeting. And Dr. Floyd and I have visited at some length about the possibility of doing a couple of the other funds at each of several successive meetings, so we can take a pretty good look at some of the specialty funds that Pat referred to in his audit. Just to make a long story short, our general fund is in recent shape. We are, again, spending more than we're taking in for the year, which means that we will be spending down our fund balance, as we have for the last two consecutive years. This is three in a row that we're spending down part of our fund balance. That fund balance originally came primarily from federal stimulus dollars that were pumped into state schools because of the economic recession that started in about two thousand eight, nine fiscal year. Our state still holds the first-place record for being, for having reduced its state appropriations for per capita revenue to students in our state. We go first in. So they essentially have done something that's illegal for schools to do, which is supplant state and local funds with federal dollars. That means that even though we are growing as a state in numbers of students, and any public schools is growing pretty dramatically, and numbers of students, we don't have as much money per student to work with as we did a few years ago, in the two thousand nine fiscal year. So that means we've got to start slowing this freight train down. Because as we can see, the economy has turned around. All this took place when Oklahoma's economy was relatively great compared to the rest of the nation. Now we're slowing down partly because the price of gasoline, the price of oil is down. Our state leaders are saying that next year, FY sixteen, we're looking at somewhere between three hundred and six hundred plus million dollars total in that budget, which means, in my view, that public school appropriations inevitably are going to be cut for next year. And we're gonna have to start looking at every place that we can economize. We don't want to increase class size or lay off people. But we are going to need to ask ourselves questions when we do have resignations, when it is difficult to fill some of the vacancies that we've got, whether or not we can really afford those vacancies. So my recommendations will be to start slowing down on our spending. We need to try to reduce the amount that is gradually shifting from one-time expenditure, which is how we built that fund balance, into recurring costs. As we raises and as we expand staff, we're gradually shifting part of our budget into recurring costs that we really can't afford, because we're spending more than the new revenue sources that are coming in, which is how you reduce your fund balance. That can't continue forever. So we'll speak a lot more, or I'll speak a lot more about that at our next meeting. Would like also comment that we, we did, we're successful in getting the state department of education and the tax commission to work together. And for the first time in twenty-two years, we are properly getting credit for the excess amount of ad warrant taxes that are being levied here in Darkville County. That money is staying here and no longer being redistributed to the rest of the state through our state quote equalization formula. We were being charged for four of the We were being charged for four of the, um, fifteen percentage points that our assessor uses on commercial, personal, and ag-personal property, and we should not have been charged for that. So it meant a difference of four hundred fifty-one thousand seven hundred eleven dollars for this year. If you look at the last twenty-two years, we're talking in excess of ten million dollars. And our children here in Garfield County were cheated out, so to speak, because of mistakes that were made at the state level. And I'm not placing the blame on anyone, it was a, it was a multitude of community errors between a couple of state agencies. Um, we are, Dr. Floyd and I attended a meeting last week with Dr. Pennington, looking at ways that we might be able to get some regress on that, because our kids here in Garfield County, our taxpayers, ended up giving away through the state funding formula, that money was given to other districts, and so.
I'll say a couple words about that before we move on, Carl. First off, um, I think it's great that, uh, due to the fact that we pushed that issue, we garnered four hundred and a half million dollars roughly, uh, this year, and I'm convinced that if we had, we, Carl and I along with a handful of other districts, had not pushed that issue at the State Department level in early December, we wouldn't have gotten that money this year. So I'm, I'm happy with that. Carl and I, um, as he said, uh, we, we attended another meeting February twelfth with, um, a handful of the districts that are in the same boat that we are. And what we talked about were a number of issues that day. Uh, one is, and there was a lawyer present, there were two lawyers present there. We asked them, uh, is there statute of limitations on this? So that, because the issue really at hand is, it's great that we got the four hundred fifty-one thousand dollars this year, that rectifies this year's problem, but for twenty-two years, our district was the loser, and not getting the revenue for our students that the taxpayers were actually paying to the tune of, uh, uh, four pennies. Um, so, uh, the lawyers both said, no, there's not a statute of limitations. And so that's good. And Carl already mentioned that twenty-two years of half a million dollars equates to roughly ten, uh, ten million dollars for our district. The good news is, according to these two lawyers, is that there is precedent on this issue from a Muskovy case, um, several years ago in the late nineties. Uh, Muskovy was overpaid by the state, uh, to the tune of a bunch, um, in their allocation. They self-reported the problem, uh, they did another audit, and it was discovered that they owed money back. So it went all the way to Supreme Court, and I'm sure, you know, Muskovy didn't wanna have to be on the hook for repaying all that money, but it went all the way to the Oklahoma Supreme Court, and they got a declaratory judgment that ruled several things. Number one, that the State Department does have the duty to collect that money back and get all of that overpayment. Number two, uh, that the question was answered, can you go back? Uh, 'cause I think it happened over more than one year, it was a handful of years. So can you go back over time and make them pay back for several years? The answer from the Supreme Court was yes, you can. And thirdly, um, even though it was a true mistake, um, do they still have to pay? And the Supreme Court said yes, they do still have to pay, and they did. And lastly, uh, is it a rectifiable mistake? And the answer was yes, and so they have to, they had to pay their money back. So I felt a little bit better after we heard that, uh, Supreme Court case precedent, because I think that's something that we can hang our hat on in moving forward. Um, so the next step is that, uh, the issues really are taxpayers and kids. For twenty-two years, our kids did not benefit from the money that was due them, and the taxpayers were paying money that was supposed to be, uh, benefit to our district, but was not. So, uh, the next step is to, to try to develop a list, a comprehensive list if we can, as to which districts are in the same boat that ours is. And we're calling those winners this year, but for twenty-two years, we were losers. So develop a comprehensive, and then secondly, develop a list of questions to distribute that those school districts can talk to their boards about as to whether or not they want to enter into, um, legal action to try to press this issue, to try to recover that money. So you might say, well, there's, there's not enough money in the system to recover. Well, it's not like the Tax Commission or the State Department is gonna have to find a pot of gold to distribute. It actually is going to come from the opposite end of the spectrum. So for twenty-two years, we were losers, and these others were the winners, and it's gonna have to, the balance pendulum is gonna have to swing like that. So in essence, for our district to gain, these other districts that were winners for so long are gonna have to become losers, quote-unquote. So that's really how the resolution will, will pan out.
Most likely over a similar time period, probably an installment basis.
I think that's the best way to do it, yeah, and that way nobody gets hurt significantly in a short period of time. But put yourself in the position of state legislator, especially if you're in Tulsa area that is a significant loser in this issue. Granted that they were significantly winning for twenty-two years, but now they're about to be a significant loser. So that's gonna be the next, uh, issue. And so, um, so that's where we stand right now, and, uh, we just, uh, kind of agreed that, uh, David Pennington at Ponco would kinda take the lead, and we're kind of, uh, uh, next, uh, in propping him up, and, uh, Carl and I, me, uh, volunteered our assistance to help him, uh, with whatever he needs, because I do think it's an important issue that we need to, uh, try our best to try to access some of that money. I have talked to Representative Caldwell and Senator Anderson about this issue. They are both, um, in favor of us exhausting all efforts to try to recover that money that is rightly ours, and, uh, so we're going to keep them in the loop, uh, on this issue and, uh, enlist their assistance as we, uh, move along.
Are these attorneys gonna take this on a contingency, or will there be some?
We haven't gotten that far yet. RFR, who is our, um, retained, uh, counsel, is in a catch-twenty-two position too, because they represent winners and losers, and they really can't take the case on. There's no outfit out of Oklahoma City that's not in that situation, do isn't?
Corwin Dunn Lee is one, is a firm that we've tossed around as possible.
And why are they, uh, they don't represent that many businesses?
They don't represent school districts as a, as a main body of their business. There is another outfit similar to RFR called the, uh, Oklahoma Center for School Law that has several attorneys that, that specialize in school law that we would definitely not want to involve, because they will have clients on both sides of this fence, so to speak. Corwin Dunn Lee should not, they're a prominent firm that does a lot of work around the Capitol that are based up in the city, so that's who, Dr. Pennington thinks we might want to contact.
So I'll try to wrap this up. Um, my question to the attorneys was, okay, let's say that some powerful legislators, uh, just say, well, we'll just pass a law, this session that washes slate claim. Um, can they resolve the issue that way? And they're, correct me if I'm wrong, but their legal opinion was that based on the Muskovy case, that would not work, because all, for all the reasons I've mentioned, that they won that Muskovy case, and Muskovy had to pay their money back. I think we can hang our hat on that and say, look, this was a legitimate mistake that two governmental entities were not communicating effectively, and the Tax Commission didn't get the information to the State Department correctly, and therefore districts like us didn't get our money over twenty-two-year period. So regardless of what the legislature may do, we still gotta resolve this issue that was ongoing for twenty-two years.
One thing I think that's in our favor too, though, is that our, our speaker right now is not from Tulsa or up on the city, so it might have a little trouble getting past him. And I don't know where Pro Tim's from in the senate, do you know? I don't even know who the Pro Tim is right now.
Where are the Hickman's, uh?
He's prepared.
Uh, where are they standing, they a winner this year?
That's one of the things we've got to, to determine, in fact, where we're going. One of the things that we need to do is develop a map that places districts within key legislators, um,
Pro Duncan's constituency.
In game, nice, and in fact, they pretty much broke the even. So that's what I'm pondering.
Anyway, that's, uh, I know it's a little bit longer explanation than, uh, we all probably needed tonight, but, um, just suffice it to say that we're working on the issue, because it is big enough dollars that I think we need to continue to work on the issue, even if we have to join forces with other districts to, uh, pursue legal action on this issue.
Good job. Well, to keep us moving along, I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a motion to approve the budget, unless you need further discussion.
Big wave breaks.
Very good. Is there any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let's bring this to F, the change order.
Uh, change order number one to the construction contract for Henson Construction for the renovations, uh, of the Culver Early Childhood Center. Uh, we were, the contingency, ten thousand that was built into the contract was not needed, so we're actually proposing a reduction in the total contract price, and we will, uh, unencumber that ten thousand dollars after the move over exchange. Recommend approval.
Field of reference.
Any other discussion?
And just very quickly, that, uh, our record of early childhoods and the district to that building is very pleased with, uh, the outcome of the renovations. It's quite colorful, uh, it really looks nice, and it's a great environment, uh, for our four-year-olds to.
We need to have a meeting there.
Uh, we can either have a meeting or.
Take a tour of it.
It's gonna be fine.
Really nice.
It just nears, it seem like Henson seems to be able to bring these jobs in.
As long as our local, yeah, our local group does a great job for us.
They're not doing that deal next door, right?
They're really not. They work the low end. They're working. They've got another inspection tomorrow, and they're supposed to be finished Friday.
Any other comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public school summer guy, summer school guy.
Uh, you were sent a copy of a rather large PDF of the summer school compilation of all the programs that are offered. I refer to it as a guidebook, some people call it the summer school handbook. In print, it looks like this. Uh, it's simply a recap of all the different programs and some of the communications that go out to, uh, various groups that might be interested in attending summer school. A large part of our summer school now is funded with, um, grants that are focused at assisting students in closing the performance gap between where they are and where they expect them to be. It's no longer just a tuition-based, more students that want an extra credit and the same stuff.
I don't want anything of this sort.
No, I mean, it's, it's what we usually do every year. Uh, the services provided this year are consistent with what we provided on the task, so.
Pretty straightforward, what we've done in the past.
Is there a motion? Any discussion?
Well, I just wanted to say, I attended the meeting when they finalized all this, and that group has their stuff together. They know what they're doing and what they're supposed to do, and we're lucky that we have such a good group in charge of it.
You do? Any other comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Dissolve the scholarship trust.
Just a quick commentary on the scholarship trust that has been requested to be resolved. Um, this scholarship was, was, uh, established by FS chapter of PEO, uh, back in, I believe it was nineteen ninety-five. Um, I was the part when that was done. They entrusted some funds to us to invest according to, uh, governmental investment requirements for public schools, which means that we can invest only in instruments that bear the full faith and credit of either the state or federal government. Basically treasuries, derivatives of treasuries, and fully collateralized certificates of deposit in local institutions. These are the lowest earning, but the safest investments, and that's what school districts are limited to. Um, over the past several years, our investment portfolio has been pretty miniscule, and, uh, the earnings have not covered the award that they would like to give out for the scholarship. So they've had to, as a club, come up with the difference between what they wanted the scholarship to be and what we were able to earn. They would like for us to dissolve this trust, the board was entrusted with the funds, return the money back to them so that they can either work with the foundation or work with an investment advisor that can procure more return on their dollars, which is gonna mean involving them a little bit more risk, but there's more to be gained. So, uh, it, it's really going to make, it'll be one less thing I'll have to take care of or keep track of. They still plan to give the scholarship, they just want to utilize different, uh, investment, uh, investment instruments than what we are allowed to even consider. I might, might add here that we may be looking at doing this with some other scholarships that, uh, specifically may go into our Cherokee Strip Community Foundation, where they can earn better money with it, and then they would simply provide us with earnings each year, and we would give those out as scholarships. So this may be a trend that we see starting to happen with some of these awards that still have people alive that want to make the change. We do have some, but the money was entrusted to us by people that are no longer alive. They've left their estates to us, and so we'll be obligated to continue with those. And as the cycle swings back and forth, those earnings will, for example, the Longy Homes Trust, we're giving out one award for about eighteen hundred dollars, and I can remember giving as many as four two-thousand-dollar scholarships when governmental investments are earning more money. So that pendulum will swing back any time, and we may be moving some of our permanent endowments out of that endowment fund into other things like this, so. Recommend approval of the dissolution of this trust and return of these funds back to FS chapter of PEO for them to continue to provide a scholarship with different investment plans.
Turn motion?
So.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? To your business. Okay, then bring us to reports. Starting with our superintendent.
All right, try to run through this quickly, um, Amber, wanna say word about the teacher career fair?
We are doing a teacher career fair, uh, career fair on March the tenth. We have asked teachers to help us recruit potential new teachers for the fall. If you'd anybody like for me to visit with personally, I think that would be good.
Crucial issue in this time of, um, teacher shortage. Update on, uh, strategic planning design team meeting, um, February sixth and seventh. Appreciate, uh, Colin and, uh, Willa Joe, uh, joining us. It was, uh, two long days, but very beneficial. Um, you'll hear more about this later on, but I'll just kinda run through the broad categories that we kinda narrated to, that, uh, we will next develop action planning teams, uh, that will go to work on specific areas and develop plans in these areas. Uh, partnerships, uh, with community, um, people and organizations and companies, uh, whether it be mentoring or character education or things of that nature, uh, was a common theme, so that's one broad area. Number two, curriculum, curriculum and instruction, and kind of a subcategory underneath that would be technology. Number three was assessment and accountability. Four was actually curricular activities. Five is facilities, and that also would include operations and transportation. Heard a little bit of that, uh, tonight. And then the sixth one was, uh, personnel, which would also fall under that category of professional development. So those are the broad category areas, and really almost everything that we do falls in, in one of those, uh, categories. So, um, uh, we're about to start working with, uh, the consultant on next steps, and, um, I, uh, you, you all will recall. I, you, you all will recall that we postponed our board planning session until we got through the uh design team meeting. So, um, the question I would have to you guys now is, do you want to wait until we start the uh action planning team process before we schedule the next uh board planning session? Or do you want to uh go ahead and um schedule that board planning session now? If we schedule it and looking at my calendar, I, I thought that um since next month's board meeting is a short time period, we're, we're moving it up because of spring break. I think if we go ahead and schedule a board planning session, we need to uh wait until um maybe April the sixth, which would be two weeks before our April board meeting. So, what's the desire of the board, would you guys like to um hold off until we get through some more action planning team uh meetings? Or go ahead and schedule it for April the sixth?
You don't have any sort of time for windows, action thing?
I think it'll uh probably take us through the rest of the semester and into the summer. That's my guess. Because I got those uh individual teams that got a lot of work ahead of them and a lot of meetings ahead of them to uh try to determine goals and objectives in each of those categories. And then we will like um synthesize all of that and develop a timeline of what we think we can get done first year, second year, third year, et cetera.
Do we have to have a planning meeting once a quarter, I mean is that?
Not required to do that.
That's just something we. It's so easy to put it off if you don't have it scheduled and that's why it was scheduled to be that way to know. We certainly don't, there's no need to have a meeting unless you need to have a meeting.
Yeah, and I don't know that we would have that much to cover that we haven't already covered with you anyway, so. I would feel comfortable letting the strategic planning process play out and suffice for substitution of uh board planning session if you guys are all about that. But I didn't wanna make that decision for you.
I'm there.
We good with it?
Sounds fine.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, thank you, well, we'll uh just move forward with the uh strategic planning process and I'll keep you updated periodically on that. Uh, you got an enrollment form sheet there, we have it below eight thousand, now we're seventy nine fifty four. Um, fill out a little bit, I'm not up to the messages in Florida. Uh, gave you a handout from the Indian Chamber of Commerce, I, I don't know if any of you have ever participated in that. But it's uh enlisted appreciation night uh for Vance and I wanted to at least uh give you a copy of that in case you do want to participate. Uh, I will, I will probably participate in that, but um certainly uh on a volunteer basis. Uh, you probably read where uh State Superintendent Hofmeister uh did a rule on the um approving the waiver to eliminate double testing uh for uh math, so that's the middle school students, so. She said that middle school students testing algebra one, algebra two or geometry are no longer required to also affect the very level math assessment of the middle school. And um I just read a quote from her, she says until this request was granted today, all the students in seventh and eighth grade were required to take the state very low in math assessment as well as the infrastructure test for those students enrolled in algebra one, algebra two and geometry. This double testing would have penalized those students enrolled in advanced math courses by subjecting them to increased and excessive testing this year. This decision is an understatement toward our commitment to reduce excessive testing. So, we know we've got the State Superintendent on board with uh reducing the overemphasis on high stakes testing and we just need to get those people at the Capitol working on that as well. Anything to add about double testing?
No.
We're, we're happy with that.
Yeah.
Very happy.
Waiter decision, good.
I will say that the, the other part of that though is that um it will affect our A three report card because those students will not be reflected in our eighth grade math scores. So, we need to kind of keep an eye on that. That means that they still need to make changes to that A three report card and how that is calculated.
Because the issue is those eighth graders taking that, those scores are gonna go to the high school because it's a high school course. And the middle schools will not get credit for that cream of the crop level of students, so it's a catch twenty two.
That's correct.
Better for the student, worse for the middle school accountability, A three uprating.
Just another big illustration that the A three R needs more than just the old.
Right, amen. Uh, the Oklahoma Standards Setting Steering Committee began its uh work today and continues tomorrow. Um, anything after that?
They heard from three experts today um who have worked on national standard setting committees in the past.
That's good, right?
I've decided, uh talking about standards is a huge can of worms and so it depends on where you are, what their content philosophies and how they believe standards should be developed, so. We'll see what happens.
I went to my first legislative briefing uh last Tuesday and uh this is what I got. So, you think I have a bunch of handouts, uh but uh it's, it's a list of that many uh bills that are education related already. Uh, some of them are just not working their way through the uh committee process and um, um, I wasn't able to attend our legislative breakfast Friday morning, but um. The earth shattering.
It was lively.
It was exciting.
Who, who won?
I don't know if they're the winner, but.
We agreed to disagree on some things, um we, we discovered if we hadn't already known where one of our legislators stands on several issues. We'll be talk, continuing to talk again.
Do you all get the uh? Oh, my, this is the longest I've been waiting for a week.
Oh, it's a SBA legislative briefing?
Not that, with the, the urgent ones.
Yes, oh yes.
Yep.
Okay, does every board member get those? And the one, I guess the one drop out is like the, of those.
Wrote a lot of emails on that.
Yes, and I contacted all of our legislators on that issue and you got an update on that today?
Yeah, let me, um, it did not make it through committee today. Let me verify that just to be sure, but I've been following that, that on Twitter today, um, so. Yeah, House bill twenty oh three failed, House Common Education Committee by nine nine vote.
Or about seven, six, seven, nine.
Uh, it isn't, let me.
That was the one on the.
That was the Senate side of the.
Oh, it was about your ultimate.
That's John. That meeting went to three this afternoon, so.
I don't, I don't see any update on that one.
That would have to be one of the slags, probably Senator Gally.
All right, um, did uh, you guys decide you did or did not want to attend a regional um workshop? Oh, I forget what was decided on that.
The regional workshop on.
Turned out one measure.
Uh, yes, is that next Thursday?
Yes.
A week from this Thursday on the twenty seventh?
Yes, we have a group registered for that.
That's our.
Oh, already registered, okay, we already take care of it.
I do have some handouts related to that, if I could have just a quick minute. I've got sets of the new Ethics Commission rules for board members, which I'll send around.
Now, do we need to take these with us?
No, I will have something, well, you can bring them, but I'm sure they'll have handouts.
I was gonna say, they'll have this.
But this is just for your own application, don't be overwhelmed by the volume. And there's another set here that uh I'll send out.
This is for your campaign.
So, this is that finance issue, but I think it's not gonna be as bad as everybody thought, right?
It won't be as bad, in fact, well, I hear it. I have three separate, the, the actual reports that you all can file with your information. We'll bring it with me and then we'll give it to you when you get there and then they're gonna, the workshop before the regular meeting is gonna be a how to fill it out. Hopefully, you'll be able to complete it there and give it back to me and then I'm who you file it with, so we just put it back in the file and we done it, so.
Well, that's kind of separate, man.
Um.
Please handouts.
Oh, sure.
But you know, you gotta have lots of.
And you keep them on file in case anybody asks.
Right.
If nobody ever asked for them, they're wasted.
Yeah, the statute requires that they be filed with the board court.
I'm gonna guess that that's gonna be ninety nine point nine percent of the situation, that it's gonna go in files, there weren't no way they're gonna.
Well, I've been doing this for thirty years and I have yet to have somebody can ask for a uh committee or recount of the finances for a board candidate, so.
Now.
Yeah, I'm ready to change and you know, why the Ethics Committee of the school board members should be included, uh.
We do not need to be included, not at all. Who all's going a week from Thursday? One, two, three, four, five, okay.
I want to tell you all that.
I'll be there, I'll be a check back.
I will be uh for reelection at this meeting and I am going to run one more time so I can finish my term as tax president as a state office, so. Hang there if you want. What times we gonna leave? Please go.
We will leave at four thirty to make the five thirty meeting at.
Okay.
And the waiting period is uh.
Yes, of course.
Evening.
Evening, hopefully we won't shake around.
I think everyone signed up, we met except for Troy.
Yeah, cool.
Uh, I'm guessing based on what I've got on anybody's schedule, he may not be here.
Y'all, uh, I don't know if we sent that to everybody, but his deal is he was called to the Shawnee store to help open that?
Yeah, they're opening their store.
Yeah, so he's having to help out with that. That's tough when you got young kids, uh, but he's having a lot of time.
It's gonna take quite a while to be there, so.
All right, childhood vaccinations, um, you all have read about the measles outbreak and now uh we've got a, a typhoid uh issue that has been discovered, so. The Andarko County, yes, and so, yeah, the Health Department, I spoke with them at length today uh on vaccinations and um, um. Joni um got, uh has been in contact with them about uh the typhoid issue and it, it's interesting to me that when she asked them for advice or guidance, that she got an email that basically said, "For a chance." Okay, so I don't know what the typhoid thing, uh, but vaccinations, we have a meeting on March the third uh with the Health Department and I'm taking Joni, our head nurse, with me to that meeting and the doctor's gonna be present and in, in the area and a number of other entities. We've got to come up with a plan that is workable for the school district and the Health Department and the doctors to try to do a better job, especially with this measles outbreak and now especially with this typhoid thing, that is a way to get better compliance with state law. And state law says that kids have to be vaccinated in order to attend school. Uh, it's always a catch twenty two for local districts because you don't wanna exclude a kid from education just because their parent won't get vaccinated. Um, so we have to exhaust all possibilities to try to offer them uh availabilities of.
When did that change though? Cause I thought when my kid was little, we had to have vaccinations, so when?
It's still a law, um, it's just that it's become such an issue with uh parents not doing what they're supposed to do that districts have a large number of kids that would be missing out on an education for an extended period of time just because their parent won't get vaccinated, so that's really the catch twenty two. You don't wanna add anything to that?
I think Randy's gonna want to tell my three principals more, so.
Well, it is, it's part of the parent's little rights that they can exclude their child from vaccinations, however, it's, it's more than just saying, hey, I don't want my kid to not have shots. I mean, they have to file with the Health Department that they don't want those and they, they're supposed to provide us that documentation. However, like Dr. Floyd said, I'm, we're in a catch twenty two because we don't want kids to miss school, you know, uh, and it affects a lot of things. Uh, the kids' education mainly being it, uh, but principals can also be liable for allowing children to come to school without vaccinations. And I don't think a lot of people realize that and that, that can be, I think, a five hundred dollar fine uh directly to the loading principal. And so, we need to tighten up what we do and, and do the right thing for kids.
I've never heard of that being enforced, but.
I haven't either, but it is out there.
But, but the bigger issue here is that, let's just say we had for discussion purposes, three hundred kids that are not vaccinated. It, it puts the other eight thousand kids at risk for measles or typhoid or whatever, you know, that whole long list of vaccines that, that we all put our kids through. Um, and that's the main issue, it is, yes, the parents now have the right to opt their kid out and they can do that by signing a sheet of paper, but it's this other group that just doesn't take care of the business. What do we do with that two hundred and eighty kids or whatever it is? Um, and that's what we're gonna try to come up with, come to solution on this. All right, uh, I'm almost done here, um, good news. Integris has jumped on board to assist with the band truck project.
Sure.
Yeah, uh, to the tune of uh ten thousand dollars.
Oh, wow.
So, they've got our ten thousand dollars, now we got Integris' ten thousand, so uh I think uh they are now working on uh trying to get some other entities to jump in there. So, they're trying to get the fifty thousand dollars to get a new band truck and uh I think they're, at least they're on the way. Uh, we had a meeting with uh Integris recently on a separate issue from that, but it basically was on their fundraising totals and uh what they would like to do is to take the overall amount of money that they have roughly been donating per year and send that to the district and then all that long list of organizations, uh rather than them going to Integris to get their money. They, they come and fill out a form and uh we allocate that money based on what Integris has been giving in the past few years. So, you know, what they decided to do is quarterly payments, so.
Uh, we have really established, I would say, quarterly, I think would probably be best for all those.
But that, so that was one item and then that uh ten thousand dollar donation for the band truck, it really just came out of a conversation I had. Cause I'd just been in a, a conversation, a meeting with uh Tom uh, what's his last name, it's case me, the Van Busher President, Tom uh.
Bushman.
Bushman, thank you. Um, and uh, we were talking about that project and he walked out of my office and then walks to Integris and uh so at the end of the conversation, I said, well, if you guys are looking to uh invest money where you get your name advertising on something that's gonna be there for ten or fifteen or twenty years, we'll put your name on the band truck and, you know, and so I put those two people in contact with him and I'm off.
Oh boy.
Checkmate. Um, good news, the OASA District Three nominees for Central Office Administrator of Year are sitting right here. Carl and Melanie both have been nominated for OASA District Three Central Office Administrator of Year. Congratulations for your nominations, I don't think that uh, I think, oh, deadline is February the twentieth, so we should know about that pretty soon, but congratulations to both. Hmm, yeah, I'll put that at your.
Well, she decided while she's still needed rather than anything. So, we're gonna get some credit for that. Yeah.
There you go, maybe on that deal. Okay, new board member training, case of that, do I wanna do that, give them a handout on that. And, ah, good news also at the federal level, um, you may have read about the uh Title I portability um proposal. And to me, that was a backdoor voucher issue because it was basically going to allow a parent to take their Title I dollars and use it in a different setting of the public school if they wanted to. So, I contacted Congressman Steve Russell's office and vehemently opposed that at the federal level and I didn't actually get a response back. It says, I thank you for reaching out to our office concerning the issue of Title I portability, I wanted to. I wanted to write to you to give you a quick update uh in response to your correspondence. The amendment was introduced yesterday. This was Thursday last week. Uh to expand the Title I portability provision in the bill to include private schools. So I'm thinking this is not going in the right direction. And they said, uh, after a healthy debate, the sponsor of the amendment chose to withdraw it. As a result, H R five passed through the Education and Workforce Committee without any provision to allow Title I money to follow students into private schools to fund private education. So that's good, good, good. So hopefully we just get some of those same issues resolved at the state level. In good shape. Uh I think I told you last time, Ernie and I are planning on attending the um Washington DC trip. And that's coming up in uh April. That is April twentieth through the twenty-third. And our April board meeting falls on the twentieth, so uh if you're alright with you, uh I'll be with Ernie in Washington. And I'll let uh Carl and company run that board meeting uh in our absence. That probably had to be much better and shorter.
Maybe can handle that as well. It would be a lot shorter than this one.
Touche. And some of the issues we'll be working on in uh Washington DC are reauthorization of not-y'all-have-behind. Uh the effort to require quantitative pieces of teacher evaluations uh that were dealing with related to state level, but it's kind of a federal issue as well. And then uh more local control.
We're gonna want to scavenge that and so maybe you can give me your point.
Okay, Carl and I met with O G A recently on um a plan that they were presenting to districts to call smart hours, uh pricing for uh school districts. Uh helps save them money and uh we are entering into that because it'll save us roughly twenty-five thousand dollars a year. That's good, that's win-win. And it looks like everybody now has their, all board members have their information in for the uh board member website information, so we're good to go.
Well, I have to admit that I didn't actually get mine in.
We're resourceful.
Amber took care of it, so.
I think that's good. I appreciate all of that. And that is all I have, sir.
Dr. Floyd, could I mention one bit of good news?
Yes.
Although we are not allowed to make an announcement until March, we have every reason to believe we will be uh, we will be featured as a district of the station and district administration max.
Hey, yeah.
I could like wanna comment and start the signature document around. Uh this requires every board member's signature. It's an audit acknowledgement from Mr. Carroll. And I'll view the sign of that first one where it says, uh, vice president, send it over. Excuse me very much. I think we're probably gonna wanna get, have to get.
Greg, do you have comments?
I'm talking about as a meeting being long, I'll make sure I'm on short here. I wanna make sure I get this out through some of the lineups.
I'll send it to you. I'll try to play a bit of paper on it.
Alright, perfect. Um and I just wanted to say real quick, a few weeks ago, I got contacted by a stressed-out parent who moved here from Alaska in April. So I'm concerned about her and her three-year-old child and what they're gonna do with her when they get down here with less and more left in the school. So I referred that family to Mr. Rayder. We came up with a solution that works for the child and the family and relieve their stress. So I just appreciate when stressed-out parents contact me. You need the background for them, too. You will all get a quick pause in early.
It's all good, yeah, we got that working. Good job, man.
While we're while we're talking about bands, I just wanna make an plug. The uh the enlisted appreciation night is a huge deal for our community. If you don't know about that, I'm sure Greg would love to visit with you, but it's a way that uh it's a way that our community reaches out to the list of folks at bands. And I mean, a lot of businesses donate to that and it's a uh it's a way enlisted families can actually win some pretty nice prizes to carry home. Uh through a fun event out there. So what what they look usually for volunteers for is either donations, but also if you're willing to go and be a dealer. It's kind of, the time I did it, it's still like this, right Greg? It's a kind of a casino night where the the folks sit around a table and kind of play poker for tickets. And then they bid with their tickets to win prizes. And so it's it's a lot of fun. You get to know the folks at your table very well and have a lot of fun. Uh the night I did it, last night I did it was uh I had all the camp, the the bands cops at my table, so I'm in good with them. I cheated in their favor.
That is uh Saturday, April twenty-fifth, so I'm gonna check my text to check baseball schedule. Oklahoma State, oh.
That'll be in L for you anyway. You might as well just go to the.
Is that it, Greg?
Yes.
Uh any board comments or questions?
Thank you all so much. This was totally unexpected and and uh kind of stumbled around with what to say. But I really appreciate your observing this milestone with me and I I do thank you very much for all you've done.
Certainly. Thank you for your service, Will, over a long period of time. Thank you very much.
I do feel compelled to comment at this point about our, one of our state legislators who has introduced a bill to NIMET. Membership on Board of Education to a maximum collective member of years of sixteen. Mr. Caldwell has introduced that. Uh I think he might need to hear from the Senator Hill.
Well, look how close we came to going to a five-member board a few years ago because we couldn't find two more board members. And and that's not just in it. I can assure you, when I visit with people from across the state, people are not lining up to run to the Board of Education.
So. And they have the opportunity every four years and voters have the opportunity every four years. And that really is what local control is about.
That's right.
Good argument. And it takes a while to learn. Yes, absolutely.
At least the first twenty, right?
Still learning.
Thirty-nine years. It's still a Joe's year, right? But on the same token, I'm pretty sure it's not gonna impact me.
So we didn't earn it. My mind.
Anybody else comments while we're here?
Okay, next regular meeting is Monday, March ninth. Uh and right now it's scheduled at the District Boardroom unless we move it to another uh area. Uh we don't need to go into executive session. We've already been there and back. So I'm guessing we're at the personnel issues? And um how many of those can we approve at once?
We can do all of the um, all of the hires, I believe.
So B, C, and D, we can do all at once, okay? Is there a motion to approve?
Take it.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And we don't need to approve the others, correct?
Correct.
So what I need is a motion to adjourn.
Send it.
Take it. But uh we got a lot of them.